The November 20th meeting of the zoning commission for Corrine Township will come to an end. Could we please start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance, we defy the United States of America to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chikowski?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Teming?
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westphal?
Here. Mr. Gruddy, would you please be seated? The next thing on the agenda is the approval of the October 21st, 2014 meeting. Is there any corrections or changes? Does anybody have any?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes that's presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We move to second that we approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2014 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Would you please have the record say that I abstained because I was not at that meeting? Thank you. Next on the agenda is public address. That's where anybody who's out here who would like to address the commission on something that is not on the agenda, this is where they do it. Is there anybody who would like to address this? Nonapparent, let me read this first. The Corrine Township Zoning Commission meets on the third, normally the third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the Corrine Township trustees chamber, 4200 Springdale Road, Corrine Township, Ohio. The zoning commission has specified in section 3.2.2 roles and powers of the Corrine Township zoning resolution. We hear zoning change requests, recommend either approval or nonapproval, and forward them to the trustees or the legislative body for the township. This process is governed by the Ohio Revised Code. Right now, we're going to hear a final development plan. The way that works is, first, the zoning staff will make a presentation, then the applicant has a chance to make a presentation if they so request. The zoning commission then discusses, followed by a motion to approve or deny the request, and the commission then has a roll call vote. The first final development plan that we're going to look at is case number ZA 2014-02 for Evergreen. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Good evening, commissioners. The first case, as Chairman Westphal just mentioned, is the final development plan for Evergreen Landscaping. This is the final step in bringing this property into compliance with our zoning resolution. You'll recall that they own the corner parcel, and we've already approved the FDP for the corner parcel. They have submitted a preliminary development plan, which was approved by the trustees, and now it has come back to you all for final development plan approval. So, just to reorient you to the site, we have Harrison Avenue going east to west, forming the southern boundary of the property. The property is outlined in yellow. Just immediately to the east is a township-owned cemetery, and then there is some very steep topography that leads up to Hunter's Ridge, which is, actually, this is an old picture. It's nearly, it's very much more developed than is shown in this picture, but it's a residential development. And then this is the corner parcel that receives final development plan approval from the zoning commission just a few months ago. The property is proposed to be zoned PDI, and this is the submitted site plan. This is the existing conditions. We have, you'll recall, an entrance to the site off of Harrison Avenue, informal parking in the form of a gravel lot. We have two large bunkers, you know, that hold mulch and landscaping material. And then we have a series of, we have this series of storage containers, which is currently serving as storage for, my understanding is, you know, vehicles and equipment related to their landscaping business. There are two more storage containers here, and then there's a number of storage containers here. There's a, right in the middle of the site is the office. So, that's where we're at today, and this is the proposed site plan. Some things that you'll notice are, the big bulk bin that was here has gone away. It has moved up to here. There are now proposed to be three bulk storage bins here. We have the relocation of several of the storage containers over to this location and this location. We have a, we have some new landscaping that's been applied here to try to screen the view somewhat from the residential properties to the north. We have a fence that's been proposed to form the eastern boundary to try to screen the view of these bulk bins and storage containers. We have a new entrance that comes in at the very, you know, easternmost part of the site, and actually, that's just a relocation onto their property because currently it traverses across the corner of the township's property. So, that's relocated a bit to the west. We have new streetscape treatments across Harrison Avenue, and it should be noted that there's a significant grade, I'm sure you saw when you went out to take a look at the site, there's a significant grade change between the street level and parking area. So, as you look up, just a very few feet of landscaping does an awful lot in terms of screening the views to the rear of the site. You'll see that all the parking has been formalized and paved, which is very positive in keeping with the zoning resolution. There's access across a culvert to this new outpost of storage containers, and then ultimately, I believe, on to connect to the corner property where the intention is to have, you know, retail office facilities. So, that's the proposal in a nutshell. You were given a landscaping plan and a lighting plan, utility grading plan, the sign that's proposed, there was a detail of the sign, but, and a photometric plan. So, as I did my review, the streetscape buffer that's been proposed, I believe, meets the streetscape buffer requirements in the resolution. The lot buffer, the applicant proposes to locate the required dedicated open space. You'll recall, with planned developments, there's a requirement for dedicated open space. In this case, it's 15% of the lot area. So, if we go back and look, this dash and dotted line represents the area that is to be prepared, you know, preserved as open space, and that is a great location for it because it provides the lot buffer buffering the northern residential uses. So, the open space area is 54 feet at its narrowest point, and this would meet the lot buffer requirements. The parking area landscaping, the applicant proposes seven landscaped islands in addition to the streetscape buffer and the lot buffer. While the square footage of the landscaped islands wasn't provided, it appears to meet the parking area landscaping requirements. Just, you know, measuring it off with my scale, it appeared to meet those requirements. In terms of lighting, the average illumination that's been proposed on the site is 2/100ths of a foot candle. That's the average across the site. The maximum permitted is two. Cut-off lights are proposed to be attached to existing buildings. They would include cutoffs to try to divert the light, keep it on the site, and prevent it from spilling out. The lighting plan meets lighting requirements. In terms of signage, the applicant proposes a 71-square-foot monument sign that stands 10 feet in height. No wall signage was proposed. The proposed signage meets the requirements. In terms of parking, the applicant proposes 50 standard parking spaces and 13 double parking spaces that would accommodate a truck and a trailer. Eight are required. The zoning resolution says in these cases that the applicant can provide 10% more than that eight, which would be one additional, bringing it up to a total of nine permitted. The applicant can provide more than that if they provide 20% landscape coverage within the parking area and comply with the landscaped island requirements. So, typically, parking requirements are calculated based on gross floor area of the principal structure. However, given the unique nature of this use, where employees arrive to the site and then leave the site and work crews, it does seem, and the fact that this is a planned industrial, you know, planned development industrial location, it does seem appropriate to grant a variance in this instance for the additional parking. So, sidewalks were not proposed. The applicant will need to either include sidewalks in the plan or use the payment-in-lie sidewalks program, which allows the applicant to pay 75% of what it would cost to actually put the sidewalks in into a fund that we then use to put sidewalks elsewhere in the township. The impervious surface ratio on this site is 48%, where the maximum is 75%. Dumpster is appropriately located, but it's not proposed to be screened, so that's one change that will need to be made. And then, finally, this issue of outdoor storage, the applicant proposes to increase the number of shipping containers from 17 to 19, and then increase the bulk storage bins from two to three. You know, these storage bins are covered by hoops and plastic sheeting. Total square footage of the outdoor storage, which is calculated to be 5% of the gross floor area, or 100 square feet in this case, so, you know, in no case, they say, the resolution says, shall outdoor storage exceed 2,500 square feet. In this case, the applicant is proposing 6,300 square feet. So, and I know that this was an issue with the commission in the past, you know, how to deal with these bulk stor-, you know, rather, these storage containers. My recommendation is to limit the number of these storage containers. Currently, there's 17. There's a proposal for 19. My recommendation is to eliminate the bay of storage containers that are proposed on the western part of the site, and limit the number of storage containers to 15 on the site, and allow the three bulk bins. That would require a pretty significant variance to be granted by the zoning commission. I mean, they're only permitted to have 100 square feet, and in no case shall it exceed 2,500. They're asking then for 6,300. That's significant. But, again, given the nature of the use and the historic use of these things, it's something to consider. So, my recommendation, given all of that and that analysis, my recommendation is approval of the FDP with the following conditions. The first being that the applicant participate in the payment-in-lie of sidewalks program or install sidewalks. Number two, that the dumpsters be appropriately screened. And number three, that the four westernmost storage containers must be removed from the plan. No more than 15 storage containers shall be located on the property at any given time. That would require three variances. One for the outdoor storage square footage, one for the height of the outdoor storage, accommodating the height of the bulk storage bins, and then three, the parking shall be permitted to exceed the maximum number of parking stalls as shown on the final development plan.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
My name is Brian Gubow. I'm with JMA, representing the applicant. We do not have much more to present other than what staff has already. The dumpster enclosure is certainly agreeable to, and he will either install the sidewalks or do the payment in lieu. That's certainly. He respects the large amount of variance required for the 15 containers as it is, but would also like consideration if he could keep 17, but maybe keep them in the back of site or screen them very well where he proposed the other four. Yeah, sorry.
Mrs. Smith, do you have any questions?
Yes. Can you start off by telling me the name of your business? Because I, as I read, I saw Stony Lane, I saw Forever Green, and I saw UBC Corporation.
Okay. I'm with JMA Consultants. I am his engineer. He's doing business as Forever Green Landscaping. I believe the property ownership is Forever Green, or Stony Creek. The owner of the property is Stony Creek.
Is it Stony Creek or Stony Land?
Oh, Stony Land Company.
So, it's not Forever Green?
That is the business doing landscaping.
It's Forever Green.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. That's it for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chikowski? Sorry.
Sorry. I got a couple of questions. The four bins, this is the first time we're seeing them, correct? Or were they on the last proposal?
The three?
The four on the west side.
No, that wouldn't have been included in the preliminary development.
So, this is the first time we're seeing them?
On, yeah.
They were in the preliminary. What was not was the barn adjacent to them.
And that's another thing. Where is the PDQ barn going? I mean, are you putting in PDQ barn somewhere?
It was, is a example of a similar type structure.
And where was that going to go?
That is on the very west of the four structures that we have on the west side.
Four structures back there.
Yeah, there's four, the four storage containers, and then a barn was adjacent to the property line.
Okay. And then, the new driveway on the east side?
Yes.
I'm sort of confused. You've got a catch basin, but all the swale goes up against the western part of the property line, and it looks like it's being dumped way out into the street. How much are you going to catch in that catch basin if the swale of the asphalt is going towards, on the opposite side?
Actually, the contours are pointing that water towards the west.
Can you come over here?
Yes.
So, basically, your contours are coming down this way?
Yes. We can't pull over right away.
So, they're not going down the middle of the?
No, no, you're looking opposite.
Okay.
We're going down.
You're going down here?
Yep. Water will come there.
And 10 feet of, 10 feet drop from here to here will?
Yeah. Keep pacing.
That's it?
Mr. Gruddy?
What is your timeline for construction and completion of all of it?
I believe he has not gotten any contractor quotes at this time.
Thank you.
Forever Green Landscap and Stony Land Company, both. We have a contract already in place for the dirtwork. It's just we have to wait for you guys to give me the final okay.
That didn't answer my question.
As soon as you okay it.
His answer is he doesn't have one.
When will it be completed?
Within, well, this part here, within a year.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
I have another question. Is the retail store now out, or is that still in?
It will be put on the back burner, and then once you complete the retail store construction.
Okay, because I didn't see that addressed. I didn't see the retail store addressed in anything I read.
Yeah, that was in, it was in, it's actually, it's odd. It's in a separate case. So, it's a completely separate case from this one. Yeah, but the same owners and everything. It was just dealt with in two different cases.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me. Well, the only thing I have to say about this is that every time this comes in, it looks different. Does anybody have any questions? Would we like to, would anybody like to talk it over among the commissioners? Or is everybody ready to?
I'm ready to approve it with all the conditions and variances that Jeff has stated, at least on my end.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve case number ZA 2014-02 for Evergreen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant approval for case ZA 2014-02 for Evergreen, contingent upon the conditions and variances proposed or outlined to us here in our paperwork and proposed by the staff.
Do you want those read?
No, I think they'll be part of the record as, by virtue of the fact that it's in session.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We move to second that we approve the final development plan for case number ZA 2014-02 for Evergreen. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Gruddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is case number 368, 8647 Corrine. It's a minor modification to a final development plan. Does staff have a presentation? I'm sorry, I don't have, I think that's a, I don't know what the name is.
Case 368.
Right Way Auto.
Right Way, yep. So, this is a case where the applicant came to the township and is interested in expanding the parking lot that currently is just in the front of the property, and we can see it on the overhead aerial here. Currently, we've got Corrine Avenue going north to south. The northern boundary of this site is sort of the Tuning Fork area of the Bower Woods subdivision with Green Bush and going off to the southwest and Bower Woods continuing to the northwest. So, the applicant proposes to take this parking lot and expand it back to about here. And the property is zoned planned development business. It is adjacent to residentially zoned property to the west, B, you know, business, B2 business to the south and north. It's in the auto district, and the proposed use is auto sales. So, the reason that this is, this is kind of an interesting zoning case because the planned development district was established back in 1968. And, you know, so you're looking at a resolution that's, you know, what is that, quick math? 50 years old. So, you know, originally, it was zoned to this use, and they said, hey, yeah, that's a lot better than office, for example, because it protects these residences in the back from a bunch of people parking back here. So, in fact, they said that, you know, as a condition of the approval, 9,000 square feet of the western portion of the site shall be preserved in open space to buffer the residents' properties on Greenwood's and Bower Woods Lane and to be maintained in a park-like setting. So, okay, so now, fast forward to today, we want to expand the parking lot west, applicant wants to expand the parking lot west, well, now, we do a minor modification to the final development plan, okay? And that triggers a review, and the idea is that we're trying to make Corrine Avenue better with each development. So, they now have to bring this property up to current standards, you know, and so, it's, this property is very non-conforming as it is right now and as it is proposed. So, as I was reviewing the proposal, there are some issues. One issue is the streetscape buffer. The applicant proposes a landscape treatment along Bower Woods frontage, but doesn't propose any change to the Corrine Avenue frontage. You know, section 14.5.1 requires that parking areas with more than 20 spaces provide a 15-foot minimum streetscape buffer. The applicant provides a streetscape buffer of 90 by 10, but only along Bower Woods Drive. The streetscape buffer requirements for the 114 feet of frontage along Bower Woods would require four canopy trees, and in fact, four are provided. A minimum of 10 square feet of landscaped area is required for every 100 square feet of streetscape buffer. Based on the 114-foot frontage on Bower Woods, the applicant would be required to provide approximately 170 square feet of landscaped area. It appears that the applicant is providing approximately 900 square feet, which is significantly more than is required, which is great. However, no streetscape treatment has been proposed for the 121 linear feet of Corrine Avenue frontage, where that same 15-foot streetscape buffer is required. In terms of lot buffering, a 30-foot lot buffer is required for PDB-zoned parcels that abut residential districts. The proposed parking lot expansion would terminate approximately 75 feet from the adjacent residential property. So, the existing buffer area would exceed what is now required, and it does have mature trees and quite a bit of dense, you know, foliage. Let's, you know, sort of think in your head, honeysuckle, and that's interspersed amongst scrub and brush. So, the expansion would however decrease the existing lot buffer by about 15 feet, which we should keep in mind is still, you know, we still have significantly more than is currently required. Parking, in terms of parking area landscaping, there's a minimum of 15% of the parking area is required to be landscaped. The applicant proposes, you know, no parking area landscaping. In terms of lighting, the average illumination on the site is proposed to be 2.5-foot candles, maximum permitted is two-foot candles. Cut-off lights are proposed at a height of 24 feet. 24 feet is allowed. Photometric plan that is provided, does not provide illumination levels at portions of the north and south property lines or any of the western property line, you know, the maximum illumination at the western property line must be less than 21-foot candles. Terms of signage, the applicant has submitted a zoning certificate for a face change to the existing freestanding sign. The existing sign that's there, as you've probably noticed when you drove past, it's aged, it's in poor repair. No wall signage was proposed. Both of, but, and I should qualify that, no wall signage was proposed as part of the FDP, but the sign, a third-party sign contractor has applied for a zoning certificate for wall signage, and that wall signage is proposed to extend above the roof line, which is not permitted. So, anyway, to boil down the proposal for signage, they want to do a face change on the existing freestanding sign, and they want to add channel letters that would extend above the roof line of the existing building. Terms of parking, the applicant proposes 40 parking spaces, where 13 are required. It's very similar to what we just talked about with Forever Green. You know, there's a process in place for if an applicant wants to put in more parking than is permitted. In this case, 13 are required, and then you can go 10% more than that, which brings you to 14. But if you want to do more than 14, you have to provide 20% landscaping. Now, the interesting thing about this site and parking is that, you know, the site plan calls out 40 parking spaces, but I think, I think many of those parking spaces are not going to be used, like, for parking per se. They're going to be outdoor sales. It's going to be a sales, you know, a sales area. So, we can, we might be able to get rid of lots of those parking spaces by delineating an area and saying, this is the outdoor sales area, rather than parking. So, that may, that may get rid of this problem, just by changing how the final development plan is written. It's unclear whether the application includes curbing, so curbing is required. Sidewalks are present along Corrine, but not along Bower Woods. Impervious surface ratio was not calculated, but the maximum ISR in this district is 75%. The dumpsters are appropriately located and screened. So, here's where I'm at. I'm reviewing this. I noticed that there are significant challenges to a recommendation for approval by me. And so, my suggestion in my staff report was to table the matter until December. That would allow me an opportunity to meet with the applicant and their engineer, and we could go over these things and come back with a much better FDP. Subsequently, once, I sent my staff report to the engineer that is representing the applicant, and I received a phone call back from them, and, you know, they explained to me that, you know, it's really important to them and their business that they get some sort of, they very much like approval tonight, okay? And so, they asked if I would put together a set of potential conditions that would address these issues. So, that would allow you guys to look at those conditions, and if you so desired, you could potentially recommend approval with those conditions. So, I have made those conditions available to the board members and to the applicant, and so, I think that if you were to approve this with those conditions, we would have a much better project than exists now. So, that ends my report.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
My name is Scott Huber. I'm the site civil engineer, representing the owner. With me tonight is the owner, Mr. Bill Krishan, and he's available for questions if you have any. But, everything that Mr. Mills said is correct, and, you know, his original recommendation was to table it until next month, and, you know, like he said, we would prefer that not to happen, and we hope that the commission is also willing to work through this tonight. I know Mr. Mills is, you know, he's been burning the late-night oil here this week. This is his third night out, so... So, we really appreciate your time and effort to help us work through this. So, on the potential conditions that Mr. Mills has presented to you, you know, just a few points of comment that we'd like to discuss specifically is number two, with the landscape strip along Corian Avenue being five feet wide. During this week, when Mr. Mills and I were going back and forth, we were discussing some setbacks and things like that. And I think the last plan that I had sent him was two feet. There was a two-foot strip and he is recommending a five-foot strip here. We would like to ask the commission for a two-foot strip instead of a five-foot strip just because of the setback issues that we have out there. You know, I don't know if you're real familiar with this site, if you've, you know, driven in and out of it, but if you've been to the Skyline facility next to it, it's very similar and you might know that that front parking there in front of Skyline is somewhat tight. And, you know, our site, I think, is very similar to that. And I think we're just trying to pick up every bit of space that we can. So, that's why we came in with two feet and we feel that five feet would, you know, potentially crunch that whole thing even more. So, we're asking for some consideration to reduce it to five feet to two feet. The other point on the potential conditions is number four, that the non-conforming... Julie, the non-conforming pole sign, really, right?
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
The non-conforming pole sign shall be replaced with the conforming monument sign. We would like to use the existing pole sign and reface it. Mr. Mills already has the zoning certificate or the application for that and we would like to... Well, to have that certificate and not do the monument sign. And I'm not... Jeff, I haven't seen that, but I think they're going to paint the pole and reface the sign. Is that...
They're going to reface the sign. Julie, you had a look at that. Remember that? Oh, okay. Yeah.
Maybe Mr. Krishan could speak to that if he wants to come up, but he could explain. I think that's the... That's the... The current plan that we would like to do is to reuse the existing pole sign that's there and just reface it. And I think, other than that, I think we're able to meet the other conditions without any problem.
Bill, do you want to come up and talk about the sign for a minute?
Bill Krishan with Right Way Automotive. And that is correct with the sign. What we would do is it's gray now. The pole is gray. We would repaint that because it does need refurbished, if you will. So, we would repaint that and then reface the existing sign. I think it's a four-by-five sign that kind of hangs from the pole. So, that's what the plan is with that instead of doing the monument sign. And when we were in the information meeting, when we came about a month and a half ago, we were told that we had six months, I believe, of the store being vacant to reuse that sign. So, that's why we went in with the anticipation of using that sign because we haven't hit that six-month vacant mark for that building. We have through the end of December for that.
So, a sign becomes... Yeah, exactly. A sign becomes abandoned after six months of non-use, but in consideration of a final development plan, signage is a part of that. As it relates to the streetscape area, you know, the requirement is 15 feet on Corian Avenue. You know, the proposal is two feet. I think that that would do some good. It would soften it a little bit. I'm picturing the two feet, though, and as I was... This is... We did have a conversation about two feet. And then I was looking at the site plan and, you know, the canopy is coming down and I was trying to figure out the amount of space, you know? You would have about 30 feet of space if you moved these parking... If you moved the parking along Corian back five feet, you'd still have about 30 feet of space between the parking and the building. So, that's why I thought five feet, you know, it's a little bit less... I mean, two feet is a good gesture and I like it.
Two feet kind of matches what Skyline has. We measured that and Skyline is two...
And it would continue, yeah. It would be more...
It would be uniform with Skyline.
Yeah. So, I mean, if... That's better than nothing.
Mr. Trukowski, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have several questions. Bill or...
Bill.
Mr. Okay. Well, first of all, you're proposing... Last time you came, it was two months ago and that was a preliminary review to see what you could do and get our, I guess, opinion on it.
Correct.
Soon after that, you guys started doing construction. You took the canopy down. You did interior work. You took out the bushes in the back. And according to me, I think you guys were supposed to come back and give us all that information and floor plans and photometric plans and whatnot, but you guys just went ahead and did everything without permits or without a demo permit for the canopy, without any interior permits from Hamilton County for any moving of walls, mechanical, electrical. So, we have no idea what happened to that property. And then one day, I see all the bushes are coming down and the next day, I see the canopies come down. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely, yeah, I'd love to. The day after the meeting, the information meeting, which was two months ago, Craig from Abercrombie Associates actually called Jeff and let him know what the plans were of, you know, we're going to repaint the building. We were going to tile the inside of the building. There was a half false wall that needed to come down. There was no load bearing or anything. The thicket or I can't remember what you used for the terms of the... They weren't bushes. They were overgrown weeds that were coming onto the grass. And then there was two sections of bushes on the Bower Woods side. And we let, you know, Jeff know, hey, if we need to pull permits, if we need to do anything, let us know. And structurally, there was nothing changing with the building and we're given the go-ahead to do that.
So, from a zoning certificate standpoint, painting, don't need a zoning certificate? You know?
Tiling, carpeting.
None of that needs a zoning certificate, right?
But a certificate of occupancy is probably required. Not probably, it's required when you start changing things inside of the building. The same use, but you're moving things around. Demo permit for that big canopy, it's a structural component with electrical.
I believe that when we hired the firm to do that, he said he pulled a demo permit for the canopy through Hamilton County?
That would be through Hamilton County. So, that is... We wouldn't issue a zoning certificate for demolition.
But for the interior work or change of occupancy or change of, not even occupancy, but for interior work that's basically being changed around inside of the building.
And right.
It's a gray matter, but once you start moving walls or start putting in electrical components or what kind, you know, that requires a certificate of occupancy just to the point where Hamilton County would at least know for life and safety. The fire department would have an opportunity to come over and take a look at it. I've just... I'm just kind of one of those things where you came for a review and then didn't come back with the photometric plan with the new plan with maybe a floor plan because we require floor plans if things are changing in there.
So, what would trigger...
It's just... It's kind of like we skipped a step and I know your urgency, you just want to start because you've already... You're ready. You're ready to go. You're ready to move.
I think what you need to keep in mind is the only reason we're here tonight is because we're expanding the rear parking lot. If we weren't going to expand the rear parking lot, he could go in there and start operating tomorrow. So, you know...
If you weren't moving anything, if you were just putting in...
Well, but he'll be able to get... We wouldn't have to come in front of the board to get zoning approval if we were just going to move in and not do any expansion in the parking lot. So, you know, we kind of need to, you know, take a step back here and look at it and say, well, you know, he could go in there and just operate without coming in front of this board and doing a minor amendment.
Correct.
So, I think the work that he's done, you know, really falls under that parameter that, you know, he's not tearing down the building, he's not changing any setbacks, he's not doing any zoning-type work that he's allowed to do that.
Well, I'm not being argumentative. I'm just trying to say that the use hasn't changed for the building.
Correct.
But you did things inside of the building. Now, carpeting, tiling doesn't really matter, painting.
There was no electrical.
So, okay.
I mean, I...
I don't want to... Does Hamilton County have an idea of what you guys did or does the fire department have an idea of what you guys did?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Does Hamilton County or the fire department know what you did?
I don't know. Hamilton County knows about the canopy. I'm aware of that.
Did you pull a permit for that?
The canopy, the company that tore it down told us that they tore it, but they pulled a permit for that because they had a demo permit.
A demolition permit, yeah. Which doesn't need a zoning certificate to get a demolition permit.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're kind of...
I'm just kind of... We missed a step here.
So, if there was interior alterations...
Exactly.
So, if there were interior alterations that required a building permit, then you need a zoning certificate. And that's kind of how we handle it. So, like, you know, I can, you know, call the building guy and say, hey, check this out and make sure that, you know, nothing untoured has gone on here. And that's, I think, the best way to handle that.
Okay.
Just to let you know, the fire department did stop by and check everything out, too.
Did they?
Yeah, absolutely.
Captain Walsh was out?
What's that?
Captain Walsh, do you remember?
I've got his card and I did bring it with me, but he took...
Well, you got to understand...
Fire extinguishers and stuff. We went through all of them.
You know, I'm not calling Jeff every day and asking what's going on. I drive through there every day and see all this work happening and I thought you came in for a preliminary review and then boom, we're doing work.
Really understandable.
And, I mean, I kind of know what that building looks like, looked from the inside and there were things moved around and things of that nature. And, you know, I follow the code because if there's any kind of minor changes inside of the building, it's a gray issue. Minor modifications, sometimes it's misused. Once you start putting holes in walls and you're moving walls and things of that nature, it does require a building permit and a certificate of occupancy because you're changing things inside of the building. Not necessarily changing the use, you're just changing the functions of inside of the building. Now, we could debate the code issue here all day long, but anyway, as far as the parking, you know, why are... So, we're okay with 2.0 on two-foot candles now where we weren't okay before? So, what about the west side where it's five, where it's .1 that's required?
So, it just goes to unparking area. So, one of the things that we've done is the lighting light needs to show the amount of canopy hitting that.
Is this photometric plan, so it's the highest 5.6 on the west side, 5 on the south side, 4.7 on the Corian, which is probably taken considerations and most stuff, and then on the west side, the highest that I can read because it's so small is five? Okay. So, we got the max on that. Okay. So, we got a 2.5 over here and you're willing to go down to two? Understand. Correct.
And we're willing to do that.
Where's the customer parking? So, the back lot is all inventory and the front lot is all customer parking? How is this going to get divided?
The front lot along Corian will be for display.
Okay.
Okay. There we go. So, this is all display right here.
Okay.
If you... Obviously, this is customer parking right along the side and this is going to be for inventory purposes. Now, employee parking and more customer parking will be at the rear of the building and then right at the front of the building. But the display will be wrapping around the sides of Bower Woods and obviously Corian here and in the back of the building.
So, if we move the landscape to be five and Jeff, you're right, 30. You do it five, 30 scale. For the building, you've got, I guess, 45 feet. So, just moving it five feet back for the buffer is going to hinder you from putting in cars that are just going to sit there and just be on display? Or is there some other hardship that we can't do five opposed to...
Well, if we do five, we will have a hard time fitting two rows of cars there because you're going to have two rows of cars for display and then you're going to have customer parking in front of the building.
Okay.
And the parking lot's so small now because we have that turn lane right there, so we lost quite a bit years ago apparently and it kind of got pushed back as it is with that turn lane sitting right there.
That's another thing I'm going to raise a question is that corner, what about that site triangle? If they start putting cars right there on the corner, and I know they said that they're going to put landscaping on that, on that corner, but once you start putting cars there, wouldn't that violate the 20-foot site triangle at a... What is it, two? Instead of the 30-foot? Right-way line on what side? I don't know.
Did you take a look at site triangles?
I did look at them.
Maybe we could... I think that what will help the site triangle is landscaping that corner, you know, and that's what we were talking about as part of one of the conditions. Great, Scott.
So, we're looking at... So, you're right-way and you're right-away, so you're looking at losing probably a spot and a half.
Yeah.
Or two spots after the landscaping.
Right.
How do you deliver your cars or how do the cars get delivered?
What do you mean, how do they get delivered?
Is there a big truck that's going to be coming in here at 5:00 in the morning?
Actually, no, they're going to be delivered at... We have a store in Fairfield.
Okay.
And they'll be delivered at our Fairfield location because we have an easy in-and-out for trucks there. And then we'll be driving them across town with Lucifer.
So, no big trucks, semi-trucks coming in at 4:00 in the morning and...
Correct. Correct.
That might be a good condition.
Yeah. Absolutely. What about the... So, we're going to extend the parking lot. Scott, how are you controlling the runoff, the extra runoff of water now going on to Bower Woods and...
Basically, everything drains to the west and we're going to continue the slope of the parking lot to the west and let it go into the grass and go on down the way. This parking expansion is small enough to meet the Hamilton County detention waiver criteria and we intend to implement that and use that and not have detention or any storm sewer. Because there really is, you know, you got, what do we say, 75 feet or, you know, something to the back of the property there to the west. So, will drain onto the grass.
I'm moving quickly here just so we can get everything in. So, what about this sign that goes across the building around all three sides?
Yeah, that's going to be changed to maroon color. The only reason it hasn't really is just because it's part of the permit that we're trying to pull for the sign. The same company's going to do that. So, that's going to be maroon in color and then the channel letter LED sign will be on the front of the building.
Well, I can tell you right now, I'd rather have the channels right where these letters are instead of above the roof line. I think you'll still have the same amount of visibility now, even more so without the canopy if they're lit. Are they lit?
They're backlit, correct?
They're backlit?
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, I wouldn't be for them being above the roof line if you wanted to put channel lighting. Now, is it going to be only on the Corian side or is it going to be on the south and the west?
Just on the Corian side. Yep.
So, how are we going to handle these conditions here as far as the signage? So, you're going to have sole, Jeff, I guess?
Yeah.
Obviously, that's what you're going to say anyway and it'll conform. So, we won't get an opportunity to see what those look like prior to getting any...
No, because the reason... So, no, because they... The advocate's intention is to get an approval and get a zoning certificate and get underway. You know, that's why my initial recommendation was to table it so that you guys would be able to get another chance to look at it. And that's, like I said, that's your call. I think that we could get to a good outcome, you know? I mean, I want you to know that you can trust that whatever it is that you condition, I make sure it happens, you know? So, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to because, I mean, in my opinion, like I said, Bill, I don't go running to Jeff and asking for everything. It's just kind of one of those things where you guys came and then started doing stuff and then we approve everything and then we start seeing things happening. Despite what's happening out on the automotive end, I think Jeff and everybody's working with Corian to try to get the signage, the flying flags, the sails, the yard signs, the fluttering of everything, I guess, cleaned up. So, I would respectfully ask you to maybe follow the sign laws or zoning laws with no flags and no balloons and all kinds of other things. I know you're going to see it across the street, but they're trying to clean that up with the other dealerships because, I mean, it's getting junkier and junkier with all kinds of signs and... I would respectfully ask if you guys could, uh, kind of curb your signage and follow the zoning code.
Understandably.
And then as far as the lighting and the signs, I mean, that's up to you. I personally, I don't want the channel letters above the, above the roof. Um.
There were three signs proposed to you, right Jeff? Weren't there three different options?
For channel letters?
Yeah, ten feet and fifteen point, I believe, or something.
So, so long as, so the, um, the rules for channel letters are, uh, one square foot of wall signage per linear foot of building frontage. Okay. So I don't, however many linear feet of building frontage there is, you just convert that one to one. That's, that's the amount of square footage, but it has to, the wall sign has to be within an architectural frame, you know, so it can't extend above the, the. Now, what you could do is you could put a parapet on that, a little parapet. And I mean, if you wanted the letters to be bigger, that's cost, but, um.
So right now you've got fifty lineal feet.
Yes.
Fifty square feet.
Fifty square feet. So whatever that works out to be. So, um, you know, if it's um, two foot letters.
And I, and I know the skyline has two feet, but, um, I think every time we do something, we should move above and beyond of what if somebody else was allowed to do and, and, and try to make it better. Personally, I went to five feet. There's obviously three more people over here that, um, can, can vote me down on that. So, uh, I'm willing to say yes with the conditions that the signs and the lighting and everything else that's approved for, for these variances. And, um, with the exception of the truck or any semi trucks coming in there at five o'clock in the morning, and I know the dumpsters are gonna have to be, you know, whatever time they, they, they come in there. I mean, the residents back there still are still subject from the skyline and from the enterprise. I understand that and from the car dealership. But then if we add another one and then another one, how much more are we gonna be able to?
Yeah.
So with the condition of no semi trucks coming into that lot, uh, delivery of cars, you know, like you said, that you do from Fairfield and then just drive them over. And then with all the conditions that are on here that, um, were suggested, uh, no channel letters above the roof. And then my suggestion is five feet for the landscape, uh, no irrigation.
Just to let you know, on the dumpsters, we're not, we're not putting the dumpsters in. So there will be no dumpsters on the site at all. Yeah, yeah.
That's positive.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the code. Your code wise, you're supposed to have a dumpster out there.
What if, what if it?
Is it a zoning code or is it a Hamilton County?
Must be a building.
It's a Hamilton County.
Must be a building code. Cause I mean, for our, you know, for our purposes, you could, you could have just a little like trail or, you know, like a, a trash can.
That's, that's exactly what we're gonna have. Correct.
For our purposes.
So no dumpster enclosure, no?
That would be awesome.
No dumpster.
That'd be fantastic.
No trucks.
Well, with that question of the dumpster, then is the current pad and, and screen dumpster area going to be removed?
Correct. Yeah, we will not be putting that in. It's not in there presently. We're not gonna be adding that. Yes.
Okay.
That'll just be.
Currently there.
No, it is not there.
That, that, oh, it's on the, it's on the, uh.
On your plan.
Take it off.
It's on the plan, but they're gonna take it off the plan.
Yeah, we're gonna take it off the plan. Correct. Yes.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Mills, the existing monument sign in reading the language in your staff report, I'm keying off the words poor repair, is, uh, the sign dangerous?
You know, I wouldn't, I don't, I don't know that I would go so far as to call it dangerous. It's a, it's, it looks to be, I mean, I would just guess like cast iron pipe. It lets, kind of what it looks like. It's like a four inch maybe diameter pipe that, that sits up. And, and what, what happens is it's got a pipe that goes up and a pipe that comes across. And then there are, there's a sign that sort of hooks on to the crossbar. And it's just, it's, um, it's old, it's in poor repair. I don't know that I'd go so far as to call it dangerous. Um, I mean, I don't know the condition of the things that attach the sign, the four by five sign to the crossbar. I don't know those conditions, but I think the sign structure is not gonna fall over.
It was completely refurbished eight years ago. They, they rebuilt the entire thing, including the pole and everything eight years ago.
It's just a sign that hangs and does this.
Right.
It's, it's fine.
Flip flops.
It's fine. If they refurbish it and they paint it and they get the rest off of it and whatever they have to do, I just.
It's a relic. It's a vestige though. Call it a vested.
Another question, Mr. Mills, if we're going to consider these potential conditions, should we not include an item in there, whether it be number six or seven or whatever about the curbing?
I think that's a good idea.
Since the sign, sorry, since the sign is existing, are we not requiring to put landscape around the sign like it?
Right. Yeah. So, right. That, that's, it, currently a monument sign would be required to have landscaping around it.
So you can make a decision when you wanna do that.
And the two foot strip is where that would be, is the, is where the sign is. So we would put landscaping around that.
So it would have.
It would encompass that.
Yeah, it would have that, that swath of landscaping, um.
And I have no problem putting some bushes around it if you want me to. Absolutely. I mean, we're trying to make it look like skyline. I mean, it would look uniform because they've got four bushes in front of theirs and we would put the same type.
That across.
Yeah.
The only other thing I would comment would be that before Chair asks for a motion that we review the condition as we've talked about a number of things, just so we have them all straight in our mind.
Sure. No, I think that's a really good idea. That'll be helpful to us also.
Mrs. Smith?
Um, I was wondering if you can just outright tell me, is there gonna be a monument sign or you're gonna keep what you got and just decorate a little more?
Oh, I would like to keep what we have and, and make it look nice. Yep. Reface it, repaint the sign frame and, uh, and make it look nice.
Okay. How about parking? Um, it looks like you're proposing forty?
Forty.
Spaces. How many, just tell me how many you?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have forty cars for inventory purposes on the lot. That's, that's what we're estimating for a display for inventory purposes. And then another twelve actual parking spots, ten to twelve parking spots for customers, you know, around that building.
So total, how many are you, oh?
It's, it's gonna be roughly fifty?
I think that Mr. Mills mentioned, and I kind of agree with it, that's not really fifty parking spaces.
Correct.
It's.
Because part of that's for inventory.
Right.
And those are not parking spaces. They'll have ten to twelve parking spaces.
And you know, one thing that's very important is that, you know, there's not overflow parking that goes down Bauerwoods or Greenbush. So there's gonna have to be like onsite parking for people that wanna come buy a car, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
And let me make sure I'm clear on the sidewalks. You're not doing sidewalks. You're doing something to the curbing to change things a bit?
The sidewalks are along coal rain right now. There's no sidewalks along Bauerwood.
Okay. So you're not putting any on Bauerwood, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that my comrades here have, uh, covered this quite nicely. If we could go through this and see and make sure what these, what conditions and variances are.
Okay. So the first condition would be that, uh, the applicant shall landscape the first parking space shown on the corner of Bauerwood's Drive. And, um, and that is an effort to bring some green space to that corner, but it's also an effort to, uh, improve the site triangle. Now, keep in mind, that's a lighted intersection, right? It's not a lighted. So it's, is it a left? So it's a right out?
Well, no, the island doesn't contain intersections. There's not.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And that curb cut is that close to the corner.
Yeah.
And, um, yep. And then, uh, the only thing there is the added traffic of people going in and out because there's two more curb cuts on coal rain and then there's the one on Briarwood. So it's gonna get confusing with residents and people coming in and out of there.
You know.
I don't know how it worked with budget rental. I really, I, I, I rarely go down that street, but you're starting to, you're starting to tank a lot of cars in there and at this point in time.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so that's the first condition is that the first parking space shall be landscaped. The second condition is that the applicant shall landscape a fill in the blank, uh, foot, amount of footage. There seems to be a little bit of discrepancy, wide strip between the sidewalk and the car lot with the grass, with grass or dense landscaping for the entire length of the Coal Rain Avenue frontage. So, and you know.
Let me pull the people.
I, I, I'll pull back and say a midway between two and five is three instead of two and a five, a two and a half. I think.
Making this hard.
Well, I mean, you know, I'm, 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 I'm trying to accommodate.
Right.
And I'm trying to not to divert as much from what we.
Yeah.
So three is wide enough where two really looks kind of like.
A cartoon.
A cartoon. So I'll pull back and say three.
Mr. Grody?
I would agree.
Three feet. Mrs. Smith, three feet. Okay. Let's put three feet in there.
Three feet. Um, the outdoor sales area, number three is that the outdoor sales area shall be depicted on the site plan. So that's simple enough. Uh, number four is that the non-conforming monument sign shall be, or excuse me, the non-conforming. Pole sign shall be replaced with a, a, a conforming monument sign. Now that's subject to debate here tonight. How does the board feel about that?
I think we should, um, have a monument sign.
Well, let me, let me ask the definition of monument.
Well, how about freestanding sign? How about just conforming freestanding sign?
Um, if they keep, if they keep the pole, then the site, to me, a monument is a solid piece of.
Yeah.
Right.
And then what you're doing is just like McDonald's and everybody, you've got site issues and they wanna have their cars displayed.
Sure.
If you do the pole, if you keep the pole in there, at least people will be able to see plus traffic and people turning.
Yeah. I mean, I, my, I have strong feelings about signage on Coal Rain Avenue, but, uh, which is no, it's, no, I'm not, it's not a, not a secret. So, um, but, um, but you know, this is just, this sign in particular isn't, isn't like, it's not atrocious. I mean, there are, so, um, so I mean, if, if you wanted to allow that sign to remain, it, it, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world for Coal Rain Avenue.
They'll refurbish it, paint it and be done.
Okay.
Yes.
You okay with that, Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Are you okay with that? Okay.
Okay. The non-conforming pole sign shall be refurbished.
And that's good.
Okay. Number five, um, wall signage shall comply with the current zoning resolution.
That's correct.
Okay. Number six, um, uh, no, um, delivery, what are those trucks called? Demis?
Car carrier.
Car carrier, no car carriers. Uh, yeah. Carriers shall be permitted for deliveries.
Let me, let me ask this question preemptively and straightforward. Are you planning on coming back anytime for a moving sign, flashing sign? Any kind of sign that goes, changes every day and whatnot? I mean, okay.
Oh, you mean like, oh, no, 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 absolutely.
Great.
I, I, I just don't want you to come back and then you want a sign that basically does all kinds of whirly birds and whatnot. Okay. And we won't put it on the condition, so.
Um, curbing must, uh, condition seven is, um, curbing shall be installed. Is there curbing at the parking lot?
Sure what the curbing discussion is, but.
So alongside, so, um, on the perimeter of, of all parking lots, there needs to be a curb. That's in the residential.
Perimeter of all parking lots needs to have a curb.
Or, or it needs to have, so here, let's, let's look at the, the wording.
Um, but then basically your runoff water, if you put curb in there.
Yeah, sometimes there are, well, sometimes there are curb cuts that allow storm water to, to move where it should move. Um, so the, the verbiage is. There it is. Continuous curbs, um. Continuous curbs shall be required to surround parking areas in all business districts for parking lots with twenty-five or more parking spaces. Continuous curbs shall be located a minimum of four feet from any structures, buildings or walls to prevent a vehicle from hitting any structure of a parking area. Continuous curbs shall be made of asphalt, concrete, stone, or other similar material, shall have a minimum height of six inches, et cetera. So you have, I mean, it's a, you've got.
We're not over that twenty-five count because we're ten to twelve for parking spaces and the rear is the play area.
So you don't wanna harden the edge of the parking area? That's what you're saying? Harden the edge?
We're gonna have asphalt and we're gonna, no, you're, we're gonna have asphalt and it's gonna go right to grass. It's gonna be flush.
Okay. Um, so continuous curbs are required when there's twenty-five or more parking spaces. The application said forty and that's why I said that curbing should be required. I mean, curbing is nice, right? I mean, it's like, it hardens the edge. It makes it look nice. Without curbing, you have sort of a ragged edge, right?
Do we do curb on Joseph or not? I can't remember.
On Joseph.
On his parking lot on.
There's no curbing on the Joseph?
Can't remember.
I don't know. That would, that was before my time. Just before.
Oh, was it? Okay. Um, well, again, I'll, I'll, I'll state that we're, uh, we're under the twenty-five parking space limit.
Okay. So that would be up to the, so.
But you're putting forty cars back there.
Right.
But there, we're not, it's not forty parking spaces. I mean, we already had this discussion that it's eight to ten to twelve or whatever for the, uh, for the employee parking and the back of that property is gonna be delineated as display.
What would the downside be to, is it just a cost issue or what is, I mean, what, what, what's wrong with curbs? The other thing is curbs should be, I mean, are, were you planning on putting a, is there any grade change here between, I mean, is there six inches that go between, you know, the, the parking and?
Well, this all just, we're, we're not the one, there's no grading that's gonna be done up here. So we're not, you know, we're gonna cut, we're gonna cut asphalt out to get the landscaping strip.
Right.
Because it's basically paved right up to the back of the sidewalk.
Okay.
So we're actually gonna have to come in the, in the front here and we're gonna have to saw cut asphalt and remove asphalt to get the landscape strip. In the back, this just all drains toward the back. And, you know, right now it's just an edge of pavement and we were just gonna hook on to that and, and put this little, whatever that is, ten or fifteen feet and just, you know, slope it all to the west.
So on the front, this is, so the sidewalk is at the same grade of, as the?
Yeah.
It's all flush.
All flush.
Yeah. I mean, there's actually a driveway apron right here and there's a driveway apron right here. And then this is all, uh, Coal Rain Avenue curb, sidewalk, our asphalt. It's all paved right now.
So then would you, would you put wheel stops there?
Well, hold on. This, this comes another question. So if you're gonna put cars across the whole length of that full rain where the two curb cuts are, where are people coming in and out? Okay. So there's always gonna be in and out. That's what I understand, but your, your, your drawing show parking spaces all the way across. So why don't we have a new plan?
New plan.
That shows.
Well, cause again, again, during the concept hearing, when we presented the concept case, we, we showed no improvements up here on Coal Rain Avenue. We didn't show any improvement. We, we didn't show streetscape buffer. We didn't show anything.
But work has been done. You've got, you've got things already done. Why don't we have a brand new plan?
Well, this is the, the plan, the plan that we submitted was just to put asphalt in the back.
Okay.
We never, uh, initially never intended to make any improvements out front until we got Mr. Mills's letter and, and said to table it because there was no streetscape buffer.
But that's wrong because when they came back, when they came here the first two months or two months ago, they were talking about bringing down the canopy and doing all kinds of stuff. So there was talk about doing the front and how many cars were gonna be in there. I mean, I've got the whole thing right here. I mean, here's the, from last time.
Yeah, and I watched the video. I, I know what happened that even though I wasn't here, I watched it.
So.
But I'm.
I'd really like to have a new plan of what they're gonna do with everything that's gone and the proposed place now. Because this is kind of like, are we having something that we, that you've done or we don't do? And, and then we have something in the back that you want done, but the front is not, so it's just kind of a mishmash of, of stuff.
Right. And I think we're overthinking it a little bit. The, the plan is the, the, the original plan that we submitted for this hearing tonight is to add asphalt in the back.
Okay.
That's the plan or that was the plan. When Mr. Mills wrote his staff, now it's really loud. When Mr. Mills wrote his staff report and, you know, suggested all these landscaping issues and all the things that were missing, that's where we are tonight. And that's why we're here having all this discussion because we didn't wanna get tabled. But the original plan was, was never to make any improvements along Coal Rain Avenue and just add asphalt in the back. That's all we wanted to do.
But how can you not make any improvements when it's in the zoning bylaws? If you're gonna move in and do something different than what it was there and you wanna change all this stuff, then you do have to follow the zoning code. So we're, we're talking about this is because Mr. Mills came up and said, you've gotta do all this stuff before we give a zoning permit.
Right. Right.
So, why don't we have a new plan that basically addresses all those things, just like you give us plans from other places that have all the information?
Well, because we didn't know about all this stuff until earlier this week. I mean, li- like I said, during the concept hearing, we, we submitted this plan.
Okay.
And there was no improvement here. Nobody said anything, hey, add landscape buffer, don't add a landscape buffer, what are you doing? So, we just came in and-
Did we not talk about that two months ago?
You, you talked about it in concept, but nobody ever said, hey, your concept plan doesn't have a streetscape buffer along Corrine Avenue. Nobody ever said that.
This is why I'm kinda perplexed and confused because we talked about various things that they should come in and I think even Dan said, go look at J.D. Byrider, what we asked them to do over there and things of that nature.
That was for this landscape thing here that we're doing, yes.
And, and I, I think he even said the whole entire property. So, my thought, you guys were gonna come in and show us what you were gonna do with the new landscaping and proposed stuff, opposed to just coming in because these issues were raised with, uh, by Jeff. Now, I don't know what we're doing at this point in time. I mean-
But we were, we were at, um, we were stuck at potential condition seven, which involves curbing. Um, and, uh, the zoning, I mean, here's the deal. The zoning resolution requires curbing. I can get the front, I, I kind of understand what we're talking about in the front because it's that grade. I don't, I don't see a downside to curbing. I mean, I don't, it's a curb, you know? I mean, it's, we're not talking about building the Taj Mahal in the back, we're just put a curb on your parking lot. Yeah, 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 definitely. That's important, that's very important.
So, if you just put in an asphalt curb with a, with a, with a spot to drain out into the wa, into the grass?
And, and you guys are talking about on the back here, right? I mean, I, I don't know how we can do-
It wouldn't, probably wouldn't work on the front, right?
That, that's not gonna look good just to have a freestanding curb.
So, so wheel stops would be an option there, right?
To keep you from going into the, into the planting-
Yeah.
Into the streetscape buffer.
So, wheel stops would be a good option in the front? Curbing in the back?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. We'll do wheel stops in the front.
Yeah.
And we can do curbing in the back, uh, with depressions to let the water-
Okay, so we've got-
Run through it.
That's potential condition seven. Curbing in the ba, in the rear, wheel stops in the, in the front. Okay, and then potential variances, uh, we've got variances for the illumination and variances for the parking and that's all, we've discussed all this stuff. So, so those, so, to be clear, uh, those are the seven potential conditions that you could consider with an approval tonight.
I think we've got this all sorted out. The chair would entertain a motion to accept, okay, or accept a minor modification for case number three dash six eight, eighty-six forty-seven Corrine Avenue. Do we have a motion? That was, Hamilton County did that.
Yes, Hamilton County did that.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay, let's try something else. Do we have a motion to table this and have them bring the stuff in that we, we need to see so that we can make a good decision? Well, I would entertain a motion for that.
No, I'll entertain the first motion, consider, uh, as long as, uh, Brian and Scott get the information to Jeff within a timely manner, meaning maybe within a week before they open, um, within the next week. With the new plan and the proposal of what's gonna be actually on this property with all the new stuff that we talked about here. Landscaping, curbing, uh, canopy's gone, parking lot, where the customers are gonna park, how many parking spaces are gonna be in the back, the curb in the back, uh, in the, in the seven motions that we, or the seven potential conditions here. So, I, 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 I would agree to not table it, move forward with the condition that they have some information with the signs and everything else that we talked about to Jeff within a week.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We moved and seconded that we accept or we approve case number three sixty-eight eighty-six forty-seven Corrine Avenue. Do we have a roll call, please?
I have one more question, if I may.
Certainly.
To the owner, are you planning to use any of those, I don't know what to call them, but where, like a ramp type thing where they put an automobile on it, where it sits higher so people can see it?
Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chakovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Grote?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Westfall?
That presents a problem. If I vote no, that means that it doesn't pass, right?
Correct, yes.
The tie is a loss.
That's right.
I reluctantly vote aye. Motion carried.
Alright, guys. So, we'll be in touch. Alright, very good. Okay.
Next on the agenda is public hearing. We have no public hearing. Then the next thing on the agenda is an informal concept review. The way an informal concept review is done is the zoning staff makes a presentation of the concept plan. The applicant may also make a presentation of the concept plan. The commission will have a discussion and make recommendations to the applicant. The informal concept review is for thirty-seven, thirty-five seventy-nine Blue Rock Road, White Oak Garden Center. As soon as staff gets here, we'll have a presentation. Technology is a wonderful thing, especially when it works right.
Formal concept hearings, uh, the applicant just comes up.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have-
Okay.
This one will be easier.
We're hoping.
Said this will be easier?
We're hoping it will.
Because Mr. Mills is not speaking, is that? Well, this, uh, included with the packet of information, a, uh-
Could you state your name, please?
Yes. My name is Jeff Webler.
And you're the-
Owner.
Okay.
Of, uh, White Oak Garden Center.
Did you say Webler?
Webler, yes.
I, I know which way north is on this, so would you please state which way is north on this? Okay, okay. Blue Rock Road is north, okay? Okay, we're right-
Well, actually-
Actually, it's not almost north.
That's more, yeah, I guess it would be more northeast.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, anyway, in my, uh, with my letter, I had a concept review letter that sort of gave some background information and things like that, uh, that I didn't necessarily want to review the history of our business and things like that, uh, but, um, been in business for thirty-four years, um, thirty years at our present location. When we moved in it thirty years ago, I never thought I'd be saying this, but we have, uh, grown significantly over those, those years and, um, currently, we're sort of outgrowing our current location and, uh, over those years with the, uh, acquiring of various contiguous properties over the years, uh, one at a time. Uh, making improvements, tearing buildings down and opening the area up and, uh, so we're, feel that we're poised for more growth. Um, my two sons are in the business with me now. Uh, Andrew is with me today. Evan and my oldest son is, uh, we're having a holiday preview open house tonight, so he is, uh, manning the fort, so to speak, so, um, but we are, we have been growing the last several years and we feel that with the, uh, changes and improvements to our aging facility that we could easily put on, uh, a fifty percent growth over where we are now within the next ten years. Um, various projections and things like that, that we believe this to be, uh, will happen. So, with the, the biggest part of this plan that I'll present tonight is, uh, what started this whole process is um, our aging greenhouses and, um, that, that needed to be enhanced and, and enlarged. And those, um, those greenhouse additions then started to snowball into, uh, redeveloping our whole site plan, which if you've seen our site, it's, um, it's rather complicated and it's elevations and, uh, contiguous properties and things like that over the years. So, so with that, we thought, you know what, we need to look at this site as a large entity now and see how we can best utilize the elevations and, um, best use of the area. So, um, here we are tonight, just to sort of present some of these ideas and thoughts. But the, uh, biggest part of this is the greenhouse structures, which, um, which we plan to, um, to implement first. This slide is the base map of our, and the black outline is our, um, property boundaries with the contiguous properties that we've acquired over the years. As you can see, there's numerous multiple zoning districts. It entails about four and a half acres all in total. And, uh, thing of note, the Hermes Drive section here, this is a private drive, that does, that feeds four homes, um, and then it's a dead end. It's just a gravel driveway, between the Naughty Pine Bar parking lot and the, uh, property right in here. Might also note that this was a structure that has been torn down now. Um, this is another residential home that's been taken out. And so, this whole frontage now is, is all, um, part of our development and parking. And this area is plant sales area, greenhouses, store, um, pull-around nursery, uh, sales area here and, uh, loading and, uh, and then exit onto Hanley Road at that point. Um, you can see the, uh, planned unit development portion of this used to continue up here. When they relocated Hanley Road, the, um, county had, um, taken this from us in terms of the needing for their redevelopment and real, realignment of Hanley and Vanning Road, which is a much better, uh, intersection now and certainly safer to travel on. It's been, it's been good for the, for everybody. Um, but it did lessen our footprint a little bit, so, um, the need to expand is, is, we're kinda, kinda at that point. But as we've grown in this retail area in the front, we've have, have expanded in sales areas in both of those areas. So, we've come up to this. This is the master plan. Now, the plan that you have in front of you in your paper, hard copies, this plan showing here has been expanded a little bit, or not expanded, but, uh, enhanced. So, we've, we've added some more detail, if you would. So, what I have done is, um, sort of go like a, I have considered with you how we utilize our site and, um, but parts of this plan, um, are showing existing things and obviously there are some proposed things that are on here. I've broken it up into seven different segments that I'll go through in more detail. Kinda as we go. Starting with the Hanley Road, um, portion, this, this is sort of a, um, proposed lean-to structure, um, that is mostly used for customer loading and, um, people pulling around and loading up their plants as they pull out to, to the Hanley Road. Uh, it's also used for, um, palletized bag mulch storage and, uh, trucks and forklifts, um, kinda in that storage area. This is a photo of the, near the Hanley Road. As you can see, it's, um, right now is not a pleasant site, it's rather unsightly, but it's a storage area for, um, for all of our things and hard goods and things. Um, looking view from the other direction. So, the proposed structure, um, is to, um, this sort of a lean-to, um, open-sided to the front with closed three sides and a roof structure. Uh, extensive landscaping, these are, um, large arbivita hedge that would completely, um, screen any sightlines, uh, large viburnums in the back here and then, of course, very nice streetscape, which is existing. Sort of a representation of what we envision here, this are the arbivita hedges that would be along the backside. And this is similar to what I have in mind in terms of the lean-to structure to, to kinda keep the clutter out and keep the, um, products dry, keep them out of sight, just keep up the clutter. This next area is the, uh, improvements to the, where a residence was purchased last year and the building was torn down, uh, early winter. And, uh, parking lot and, um, this is its current, after we removed the building and based out gravel, um, we have, um, the plan will show, this is just, I'm showing you elevations in picture so you can get a, a grasp of the, what, what it currently is. Um, the, the plan is for, uh, curbed parking, with extensive landscaping, uh, across the front and sides, as well as large areas of, um, annual seasonal color all across the front. And then, I mean, that, we're in a beautification business and so this is our, our best form of advertising and so this is, um, quite an extensive square footage, I couldn't tell you, but it's, it's a lot. I think it's about three or four times the requirement in terms of landscape beds and things like that, but, um, so this is enhanced parking area, um, that we're showing.
Do we, is that, is that a retaining wall that you're putting up?
It's a landscape wall.
Landscape wall, like, alum block type?
I think, um, let's see, I think they said it's about two feet.
Like an alum block?
Something like that, yeah. More decorative, but certainly some bit of a retention. The idea is to help keep the cars from view, as well as elevate the-
Yeah, the two-
Color and the landscaping so that it's more visible from the front.
I was just interested if you were doing the lan, the, the slope or you were just putting up a little bit of a-
No, we're gonna-
Poor use of a, of a word. A foundation wall or a-
Right.
Retaining wall, it's just a, just a landscape block.
Yeah, okay. The next area is our front entrance area, um. Most of this is existing, as you can see from this picture and it shows our, our current sign that's been up for thirty years. But the, uh, landscaping that's been done over time, uh, in other view from across the street. This plan just shows enhancements to that landscape area, um, as well as additional color beds to, um, provide seasonal color. Also, in addition to this, we have, um, irrigation going in this, hopefully this winter across the whole front and Hanley, that'll do the whole perimeter of the- the whole front and Hanley, that'll do the whole perimeter of the landscape, so.
I think you just made a lot of friends.
Oh, man.
That's a good thing.
No, 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 Dan's not here to enjoy this. No, 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 Dan's not here to enjoy it.
So, yeah, once again, that just, the details are shown enhanced landscaping, so. Kind of a similar representation of what we have for color, annual color, just massive color beds that will change seasonally. And this is also going to be in, around the perimeter of the landscaping as well because we feel that this is our best form of advertising. This is the meat of the design in terms of what we need to accomplish first. And as obviously the biggest expense of this whole project is a new greenhouse. While I have, well, I can go to, well, yeah, while I have, our current greenhouses now are only about from this line to hit the second line in this area. So to get a representation of the size that we're going to be proposing is quite a bit larger.
Mr. Weebler, I'm gonna keep breaking in. So that's a 14,250 square foot addition. How tall is that gonna be? Is it gonna be taller than the current building? The roof line of the current building?
Uh, the actual peak, no, I don't believe so.
It's not gonna be taller or is it gonna be shorter?
Well, I have some drawings that might show that. I don't know the exact height.
Got it.
Basically, this existing greenhouse is now, the gravel area that you see all in here is essentially all gonna be under glass.
Correct.
So that's just a stronger of the detail. This is a Photoshop rendering of the look of the structure. The heated portion is these first four houses and then this large entry area, atrium area. Those are the heated structures. These actually, actually this drawing doesn't show complete. This is, there's gonna be, there's one, two, three, four peaks shown. There's actually six peaks here in the proposed. So this portion from the atrium house is not gonna be heated, but covered glass with open roof structure. These structures are manufactured by Rob Brothers here in town, they're state-of-the-art, climate-controlled. It's a, it's an unbelievable structure that'll last a long, long time. They're, and then once again, the heated portion is, as I described. It's totaling about 14,800 square feet.
14,250.
Yeah. But the, the heated portion is only 6,500.
Okay.
And then the canopy area, which is showing a 10-foot porch, that's all glass across the front, is also just a covered glass structure, but a covered portion, glass, about 8,300, something like that. This doesn't show the exact, here's the gutter line of the building, but it doesn't show the peak.
It's gonna be considerably taller than?
I don't know that it is gonna be considerably taller than the actual peak.
The middle is, the smaller, the smaller gables are going to be just, just in line with that.
Hard to tell because that peak isn't showing off to the right there.
If they got that, if they've got that, well, yeah. Definitely the middle piece are gonna be taller. You might want to check the code before they go any further about the height of the building. We have a height limitation, wouldn't want you to go down the line before.
So in the, in the B, B2 and B3, the maximum height is 45 feet. I doubt that it's gonna be higher than 45.
I don't believe so.
That's, that's pretty, yeah, that's pretty big.
In the rendering, it was like 60.
Yeah.
I'm sure that it'll show on the drawings, which I have, but I haven't looked at the height.
I was gonna call it the mini conservatory.
So this is actually a front view, the top, oops, I'm sorry, hit the wrong button. The, this top drawing is the Blue Rock elevation look. And then the other is the backside looking towards Blue Rock. The front is all glass, this would become a main entrance into the atrium area.
Is something like this required to have sprinklers with, with glass? Mr. Weebler, is a structure, and I'm not familiar with structures like this, so I don't know, I don't know, but are sprinkler systems required with this type of structure because it's glass?
Typically no, because it's, this structure, and you can see, and you can see from these headlines, it's actually an open roof, but-
Correct. Typically with even any structure, when you have, when you have people inside of it and with certain amount of square footage, I don't know about greenhouses.
Were you able to talk with Captain Walsh about this?
Briefly, but not specific questions, which-
Yeah, you might want to check the OBC and the required square footage opposed to when that threshold comes in because it is a structure where the public will be in, just because it's a glass structure doesn't mean that it's not enough. So, you know, if it's a B to B, I think it's well under, I think a 5B, I think it's somewhere around 15, some thousand square feet.
Yeah, we'll check with Captain Walsh about that. That'll be a good thing.
Well, there's a whole list of questions that I'll have with-
Yeah, okay.
Once again, these are all-
There's costs associated to that because with something that's huge, a sprinkler system would definitely cost quite a bit.
The next portion is the Hermes Drive enhancement, road improvements. This is a current view of the gravel drive from across the street on Blue Rock. The Naughty Pine Bar is to the left and then, and you can see that the gravel drive is rather an eyesore and that has always been. This portion of the property was probably purchased about four or five years ago and I wanted to do something, but you know, the county, it's a private drive that four people, that feed four houses down that road, one of which I own. One person has no interest in doing any improvements whatsoever and I respect that, but, you know, so it's not a project that I'm gonna really need to take on by myself quite a bit, but I am with, with the improvements that I would like to continue with, so. What this is, Hamilton County engineers have this plan and process of making road and intersection improvements from the south fork of Blue Rock, right in front of the Hermes Drive, I keep hitting the wrong button, sorry. That is the gravel Hermes Drive, Hermes Drive right there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. This is the Naughty Pine. This is the Wild Mike's Burger place. So the proposed change to these, and improvements to the roadway and intersections start here and go all the way to Galbraith and then are heading lanes and sidewalks in front of our place and, very nice. However, the changes that they're showing and proposed here, and I've spoken with them about this, and a light that, they're making the intersection a little bit more of like a 90. It used to just run right in and they're actually bending it in and moving the light, traffic light signal about 35 feet to the south. That essentially makes this ingress and egress from Hermes Drive extremely more difficult. There used to be, or is currently, a stop here on red that at least allowed, when the light changed and traffic would stop back here, allow, if you were careful and daring enough to zip in and out. So that, those changes are gonna be an improvement to the intersection to help expedite traffic and cut down on accidents and so forth, but. So this is what I am proposing. I've talked with them extensively about this and we kind of both agreed that, at their suggestion, to make that intersection a right-in, right-out. Therefore eliminating any cross-traffic, safer passage through the intersection. And I'm certainly in agreement with that. However, it's not my decision with regards to, there's other property owners that would have to obviously go along with that. But we do feel that it's, the county engineers just love right-in, right-out. They don't have to have cross-traffic and it keeps the corridor moving, so they, they were very much in favor of this kind of an improvement in this area, so.
So the four residents in the back, or the three, because you own one, they're gonna be forced to take a right because they can't go left. They're gonna be cut through your drive to go out.
Well, I guess that's a possibility while we're open, because we do have a driveway cut. And the only way that I would consider putting my customer traffic on the Hermes Drive would be if we would do a right-in, right-out, because it's just too dangerous. It's just not a good way to-
You have to convince the other three people to always-
Well, I do and I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but there are some, some works to maybe work a drive going out to Pasco out the backside, which if you had a large plan, you could, or a site visit, you could see that this is a possibility, but obviously there's a lot to discuss and work through with some of the neighbors.
Does the Naughty Pine own the parking lot all the way to the next house? Or is there, there a green buffer zone in between?
Let's see, if I would go back to the original, I went the wrong way. They own back, well, actually, maybe even beyond that last truck in that lot here. He has bought contiguous lots of houses behind him. And there is a woodline buffer that's pretty extensive before the next house. There's two homes down along Hermes that are on his side of the street. So continuing on, I've gone too far. Okay, so what I've shown here next, this is the next- This actually is a residential home that I own that I'm proposing that it is a residential zoning, R5 currently. And proposing that we consider this as moving to offices with no retail sales whatsoever, but just office space. And then the back portion of the, okay, first of all, it's a walk in front and it's a walk, sort of a walkout back that abuts our property on the, in the back that they could access through a ramp, not customers, but landscape, salespeople could access through a design studio in the lower level. That's just a proposed idea. So these pictures are showing, more pictures of the front yard area, whatever, if you have. The design shows that the front part of this yard become sort of-
Meandering sidewalks?
Yeah, meandering sidewalks, sort of a plant display gardens, showing the type of work that we can do. Not a retail sales area by any means, not a retail traffic area, but meant more to be like a quiet, tranquil, sort of a garden setting. Showing some parking in the front for staff and some, some of the large trees that I showed in the picture are just beautiful, massive red oaks that are, I'm gonna try and work around. But in the back area, as like I say, it's a walkout glass, big sliding doors here that would be like a landscape design studio out into a outdoor patio pergola, outdoor kitchen area, sort of a lifestyle display area. Once again, not for retail sales, but for bringing clients in and showing them landscape design and things like that. Kind of the idea that, once again, a picture that we have in mind for the back area there to, as a, just a soft sell. And the last area is an open lot behind this that is, well, currently it's an open lot and we're proposing to put up a non-retail greenhouse structure and a covered structure to store seasonal merchandise and overflow inventory that would be accessed through this ramp to the retail area. The elevations are such that this is elevated and it would ramp down to the retail area. And then from this area, we would ramp down to the walkout, so it's, the elevations are quite challenging on the site, so. Picture of the open lot, there is a vacant house behind it. This is a, looking towards the house, the other house. And this is showing the plan. The, we're showing extensive buffering here. Once again, large arbivida hedging, subsequent viburnums of various types. This is a potential water quality basin, rain garden, kind of a low area. This is a more intricate type landscaping, small, this would be mounded, this would be slightly mounded, but not heavily. Once again, junipers, evergreens, color grasses, flowering shrubs, what have you. This portion is the proposed greenhouses, which will be the ones that we take down, our current greenhouses, refabricated and utilized as growing and holding areas to restock our retail area. And then this is a proposed covered structure to, once again, house backup inventory, seasonal fixtures and so forth. So I, I see no trucks being delivered down this lane. All access would be through this little ramp, which is not necessarily for trucks and vehicles, but more forklift-type, toneload or things in that regard. Just, once again, just sort of a rendering of an idea for the covered structure in the back, that I don't want it to look like a, just a huge hole barn, but a, you know, something that's, fits in with the neighborhood and the greenhouses would be in front of that to screen it, so. I'm sorry, backing up, this, my, my neighbor here is, this is a two-story, very large poor, hole barn now that, and it's very well screened with evergreens and such like that all around it and so elevation-wise and things like that, that almost wouldn't be seen, but.
That's a, that is a first-class plan. I mean, that, that's something that anybody would be proud to have in their community and I'm, I'm excited to look at the details a little bit more, but-
Absolutely.
I, I've got to applaud your presentation and also the thought that went into laying out this, this site is, is pretty impressive.
Who's your civil engineer?
What's that?
Who's gonna be your civil engineer?
That's a, a civil engineerist.
Yeah. It's gonna be quite a challenging site to engineer with all the ups and downs and different elevations, specifically with that water quality basin. Is that just for the function of the property where it's gonna be like a detention basin to hold water?
All that hasn't been worked out. They're just, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's so close to the other barn, I'm just, anyway. Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's so close to the other barn, I'm just, anyway. Uh, the structure to the, let's go up to the Hanley Road structure. There's a, there's a 15-foot storage or easement. Are they going to allow you to build on top of that?
Well, my, I'm proposing not to build on it. This is more of a, a storage lean-to structure, um, but I want to make it look nice, but the, um, yeah. Currently, what I didn't address is we're currently on a septic system. EPA mandated us back in '01, maybe '02, that we have sewers accessible to us within 200 feet and we need to bore under the road and over, well, that's been a very long and arduous process. We are about to install this winter, um, sewers that we're running a forest main, um, and running it down and I'm talking, we're working with the other neighbors on Han, on Hermes Drive and, and we've got that going on through, so.
I gotta say the, the, the greenhouse that, or above Blue Rock Road will be fantastic. The only thing that I would, uh, you know, things like the parking surfaces where the, where the asphalt's going to end up being Hermes, is that proposed to be asphalt instead of gravel? Your parking lot where you just took down the house on the corner of Blue Rock Road, I mean, things of that nature, where I'm going to be looking for signs, any extra signs that you're going to have to put in, various, as you heard from the previous client, you know, lighting, um, how the wa, how all that water's going to run off from all these structures now being added and more surfaces being added. But outside of that, I wish I had your money to landscape my house like this, but it's, it's, it's a very, it's, it's a very nice plan. Is, is this going to be a phased-out plan or is it?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
What do you start, where are you going to start first and, and run me through?
Obviously, there are some things that are ongoing right now. The, um, the, the parking lot where we tore the house down on the, at the corner of Hanley and, and Blue Rock, hopefully, we wanted that to be completed, well, I wanted it to be completed before spring, but it, that didn't happen and so we're already past that point. So we're hoping for spring of 15.
So what do you envision going first?
Well, that, that will happen, that will happen immediately, or at least we hope it will. The, uh, the greenhouse portion though, is the, the, the biggest caveat that we're, we're going to be working on first. So absolutely, the, the greenhouse structures and, um, that's obviously the biggest expense and, um, challenge right now.
And then what do you foresee next? The, the, the office being, the house being converted into an office?
Well, um.
Lean-to structure?
Yeah, perhaps. You know, the, the greenhouse structures that we're going to remove, um, we're just going to warehouse until we can put them up. They're going to be refabricated, but I mean, it's just steel structures and, um, poly, so it's not a lot of, lot there to it. But yeah, that, so, you know, that phase, um, there's a lot of things we still have to work out, so.
So the next time Jeff, they come to us, they're going to come with the first phase, second phase drawings and third phase?
Well, I think it'll be a preliminary development plan that'll show, you know, my thought is it'll show the, the entire site as, you know, in its end state. And then the way that our interaction, well, then that, so that would be the preliminary development plan, they'd come back with a final. And then, you know, as Mr. Webler is building this out, he would come and pull zoning certificates for the buildings and, um, you know, I mean, so long as you're pulling, so long as you pull a zoning certificate and building permit within a year of the final development plan approval, then it stays live. Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see a more detailed plan and then where all the different phases are going to happen and how all that's going to end up.
Yeah, and, I mean, that could be, that's, that could be tough for, for you, because maybe like, I don't know, business.
Well, that could perpetuate other, other questions like, you know, Hermes, how far are you going to end up doing with the first phase with asphalt and how much is after that going to end up being, or, you know, I, I don't know. Be different questions that come up with different phases and how that's all going to roll into, um, what's going to happen next. I don't know.
No, I know what you mean. I'm trying to think, because the phasing, uh, I guess we haven't seen a project that's phased like that yet and, um, I, I just want to make sure that it wouldn't be like a minor modification to change the, the phases, you know what I mean? Like say you wanted to do phase three before phase two, well, you know, in, in a year, you know, I don't want to, I want to make it so that you got to come back to you guys, pay 550 bucks to, you know what I mean? Uh, it would be interesting to know, like, maybe a, a, maybe a, um, instead of something like in stone, maybe, you know, your thoughts could be included in a narrative like, hey, this is the direction that I'm looking to go in. Was that, would that satisfy?
No, that's fine. I mean, you know, it's just, because sometimes, again, when you see something and it's going to happen within a year, then.
Yeah.
The next, what's the next phase? So maybe we can look a little bit into the future and say, well, you might want to think about that. Or where does this stop or how does this get treated? And you have to come back to, are you going to have to go backwards a little bit to come forwards? I, I don't know what those, I wish I had a crystal ball. I'm just.
Yeah.
Kind of looking into the future because if you're going to phase out the plan, it'd be nice to know where you're starting and where you're going to end up so we can have questions for the next phase.
And I can work with you on that.
Yeah, I know. I, I think some of those could be answered a little more readily when I have a better grasp on.
Yeah, I mean, regrading phase one and then having to re, regrade phase one to grade phase two.
No, believe me.
That's, that's why I'm saying it's, it's, it's going to be one of those things where we're, where do you stop and where do you start?
Right. Yeah, and you asked me about my civil, Abercrombie is working with me on all this and they have been. Actually, uh.
Scott's special.
Scott, Scott would get a chuckle out of this, like the last time I was in or not the last time, but Tom goes, man, this guy's better than an annuity. Keep coming, another change and other, so. So, well, you know what? It's a lot easier to pay you guys and change things on paper than it is to build them and realize we haven't done it properly the first time.
That's a challenging, Scott, I mean, it's a challenging site and Scott's going to have fun with this one. That's all.
Mr. Grady?
Do you have any idea of when the county is thinking about doing that Blue Rock Chevy Road adjustment?
They are. Last I heard, they're planning to start moving utilities in the spring of 15. So when they're going to actually start digging up curbs and changing things, I, I'm just, I have no idea, but.
But you'll be able to dovetail in with that then?
Probably not. Maybe with the intersection improvement, um, yes. And of course, that, that will be contingent upon, um, Scott, maybe you could help me. The way I understood that, that the intersection improvements, our curb cuts with the in, right in, right out would require, um, us to design them and then to, for them to approve and then they would install when they do the, the improvement. So, you know, that could be something that I could be working on with my neighbors currently.
Do you actually own Hermes Drive or?
I own the Hermes Drive, the private lane portion, yes.
All the way back?
All the way, well, um, on the very first, uh, on the.
Here.
Let me go back. Can you see the, uh, Hermes Lane runs a little bit past, let me point out these houses. This is the house that I own that I was proposing offices. This is the lot that I'm proposing greenhouse and, and a, a covered structure. This is a currently vacant house that's being rehabbed and owned by Stephen Karen Dangle, who live in this house. And then, um, Jean Hermes lives in this house and, um, so all four of these homes, and then there's a, it, it dead ends right here. And so that, uh, my lot's kind of chopped up, but it is in that area, so.
Could you put up, uh, I think you had one of the pictures of your overall plan that we have here. Do you have that on the slide? Do you just roughly with your pointer show the traffic flow for delivery? Because I would imagine there's an awful lot of truck traffic that comes through there, isn't there?
Yes, there is. Currently, um, most of our truck deliveries come in off of, of, um, well, there's, there's two ways. They come in off of, um, Hanley and pull in and unload here. This is our building right there. This is a, just a big open lot area where they can, can back in and turn around. I actually have a, actually have a, a loading dock right here, but it's not situated very accessible for using for forklift unloading of palleted, palleted materials. So we usually, um, have semis pull up to the back of the building here and then, um, we just unload them with forklifts and pallet jacks and so forth. Sometimes the trucks that know us will pull in the front, pull down along the building, pull up and then back in out of the way. And then, then as they unload and then pull out and then are out to the intersection and traffic light. So that's, all of our deliveries are handled in that way.
How is that going? My concern would be how that impacts the flow of customers walking around this hole.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's been a very challenging part to our growth as we've grown, that this site was never, I never dreamt that this business would grow to the size it is, that we'd have deliveries and then the traffic of, of customers that we have. So we utilize this by, right now, the enhancement to this area is going to give us a lot more square footage. Right now, this area will all be excavated and be on the same level as this front retail portion, whereas, uh, so it will give us a lot more retail area up here in this covered shopping area. So I look for this area to be greatly enhanced and more retail customers staying on this main same level. This back area where trees and shrubs and nursery stock are now currently will be more overflow and larger material and it's not as, um, I should say readily chopped, uh, with, with foot traffic, but it is. And, um, so then the, the customer vehicles purchase their materials, check out in the store, pull down and drive around and load and, and then are headed out. So, um, it gets a little congested on occasion, but most of our deliveries are for early morning, you know, afternoons and we, we don't take deliveries on the weekends when traffic is really strong and, um.
Don't need to go to it, but when you showed the, uh, the new greenhouses, were you planning to use any solar panels on the tops of those or like that?
No, because they're, um, it's a glass structure, so it's going to be completely, um, open glass. So I wouldn't want to put any shade on it with a, any solar.
They open up like butterflies.
Yeah, they're the opening closed type, but I thought maybe it was we're utilizing some solar up.
We are putting solar blankets, they're more heat retention, um, inside the glass heated structure. They're like a big curtain that pulls across at night that holds the heat that's been accumulated all day and it, and it holds it in like a cloud cover would, if you would, on a.
On the interior of the.
On the interior. And it's also able to be drawn across portions of it so that it can be, act as shade in the heat of the summer and so it's a.
When you finish with all of this, how many years do you see yourself doing to accomplish all of it?
That's another good question. Once again, it's the master plan, so as we work towards it, but, um, I could see seven to 10 years.
Okay.
For a total completion, maybe sooner. And some of that might be up to my sons. I don't want to be spending their inheritance or, or putting them in debt that they can't get out.
So are, are we rezoning the whole place to a?
Yeah, that was.
Yes.
The question.
It'll be.
It'll all be PDB.
PDB, yes.
Can I get one parcel?
Um, consolidation is something that we talked about, that we talked about, right?
I, I've spoken to both my attorney and, um, engineers and it can be done, but I don't know if there's a good reason or not.
I don't know if there's a benefit to it.
I mean, currently I'm receiving nine, uh, tax bills.
And we got, I saw there's 10 on.
You know, so it's, it's, and well, actually, when I do go to build the greenhouses, I will need to, to eliminate some because there will be some overlap with the construction of the new greenhouses.
If, if we don't, if we approve or rezone everything at once, let's say we don't and the next phase isn't rezoned, then he has to come for rezoning with his plans. It'll be an extra step?
Um, you're suggesting maybe doing a final development plan for each phase, is that it or?
No, I'm suggesting for doing it all because if he.
Do it all at once.
Oh yeah, let's do it all.
If he does it in phases, then he has to rezone it and then come back, come back.
Yeah, we want to do it. We want to do the, the master plan all at once and then, you know, like I said, so long as, as, you know, he's pulling a zoning certificate and building permit within a year, then that keeps the FDP alive and you just keep working, chipping away and moving towards that vision.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so I, I, at this point, with, with the greenhouse construction and Rob Brothers, depending on how long the zoning certificate process takes, I probably, the earliest that I could be building greenhouse structures, there's a lot of other questions I have to answer before I get to that point, but from their standpoint would be probably fall of That would be probably the earliest.
Probably behoove you to just change it way before then and then when he's ready to come up with the plans, it's already done. And then that way we don't have to go through the process of doing that.
And that's what we're, that's what we're starting up right now, so.
So, yeah. Do the zone change in the summer, when the fall, when you're ready to submit your plans for zoning.
We can, I mean, we could get started with the zone change now. Yeah. I mean, as soon as you have the.
Well, there, there is some other logistics because before I sign off on greenhouses, I'm going to have to have zoning certificate. I'm not going to have.
Oh yeah.
Um, cash my check for building greenhouses until I have.
The approval.
Approval.
Right. And you wouldn't be able to get the zoning certificate until, yeah, right, so.
Correct.
Until you get the, the zone change, so.
I'll, I'll just need to work through those timelines with you and, and the idea in showing this is so that I can start to formulate these plans and what's going to be the best way to move forward.
Totally unrelated question. What year is that VW used after? And was that one you toolled around in when you were a youngster?
No, it wasn't. It was one of my employees, but, uh, I want to think it was, uh, 72.
Okay, a flat, it's got a flat windshield on it, so the 70, 71, I think.
Yeah, in that range.
After 73 it went into the bubble.
We're having a lot of fun with it though.
Santa Claus will be in it soon.
San, Santa Claus is coming.
All right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Um, I just wanted to ask one question. First of all, I like your project. I like it a lot. I pass by there a lot and I'm always impressed. How many residents are going to be left? You said it's a private drive that they travel on, correct? How many residents are back there? I know you said you own one of the houses.
Well, there's, there's four residential houses, of which I own one.
Okay.
So there's.
Three.
Three.
And you.
And myself.
Okay, so, so what are your, uh, other residents saying about your proj, project? Are they in favor of it?
Well, I'm in the process of showing them and I'm, I hesitate to say this, I, because the, the one resident is looking to, uh, access Hermes through Pasco. If that happens, they would build a driveway out through the dead end section. We would then put a gate up and allow only our traffic and to keep the Naughty Pines traffic from accessing Pasco Drive, which gets out through Ben Hill, if you're familiar with the area. But, um, right now that lane is a dead end. And, um, if the neighbors can agree to, to get a driveway pushed through to the other side, which it looks like it might happen, but I'm, I'm not, uh, involved in that. So if that happens, then, then, you know, we could essentially eliminate any, um, any of our traffic from accessing any of the, and there wouldn't be any residential, they'd all be going out the other way.
Okay, what about the vacant house? Is that your house?
Yes, I own the vacant lot. The vacant house is owned by one of the other owners.
Okay.
And he is the one that is going to be putting the access to drive in, whether or not a third homeowner wants to participate and paying for the expense to do so is where the question lies at this point. Currently she does not, so I'll provide her the access. I mean, we're on very good terms, there's no adversarial and I, I've shown them the plans and, you know, right now there's no, no objections and they know I've got a 30-year track record of doing the right thing, so. of doing the right thing. So.
Okay. Well, well, thank you very much and good luck on that project.
Thank you.
I think we all agree that it's a very good project. I think it will enhance that area. I'm very impressed with it. So go for it.
All right. We'll keep moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next one, Janey's old business. Do we have any old business?
We do not.
The only thing I can, I, old business, the political candidates got their signs out. Most of them in good shape. There's still a few stragglers, but they got them cleaned out and out of the way within a few days after the election.
I don't know where you live.
I'd like to give a pat on the back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know where you live, but not in my area.
Every once in a while, I see some signs out there. But any new business? That's next.
No new business.
Administration?
Uh, next month is going to be, you know, grab a cup of coffee before you come to the meeting because we've got quite a bit on the agenda.
Now, I also was a trustee Tuesday, and we're not sure when that meeting will be, are we?
Well, so the trustees are looking to potentially change the date of their meeting. However, I mean, given the, the potential for our zoning commission to go for a while. I mean, there's a lot on the agenda. Kroger, it's coming in with their preliminary development plan. And we have three other, I believe, cases. So.
Hey, it's like the good old days again.
Yeah. So we've, I mean, hey, this is all good news. I mean, this is.
That's right.
We're, we're, we're cooking. But that just means that, what, what that means is that, you know, I would hesitate to have the trustees, you know, sit in front of us because that would make for a very, 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 very.
So is it maybe possible now, a good time to change the meeting to six instead of seven if it's?
I know. Let me, let me get in touch. Let me find out what the trustee's intention is. It's all predicated on, on, there's a, there's, we're going to trial for Rumkey that week. And so.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's, there's a lot going on. So let's, let's figure out, let me, give me a minute and I'll, I'll be in touch and we'll be sure to notice it for the public.
This kind of reminds us of Stone Creek when we're here some nights till two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, no. Don't say that.
Bet you remember that.
Don't say that.
Is there any announcements?
No announcements? No.
Okay. The next meeting is tentatively Tuesday, December the 16th, 2014. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion adjourn.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second and we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Meeting adjourned.